I'm Rick Pleifer. I will be your moderator. I'm on board with the Gazette. Our Gazette staff will be participating and help us run the debate. Our publisher, John Solstino, is in the front row along with our business manager, Diana Henry. Our managing editor, Matt Winterhalter, is our tie keeper. And our futures editor, Michelle DeLuca.
Good.
I didn't forget your name. Is handling our audio visual. And the entire debate will be online sometime either later tonight or early tomorrow. To go over a little bit of the ground rules with you. This is a nonpartisan event. What that means is, we're asking you to please give your attention and respect to all of the candidates. We ask that you do not engage in yelling, cheering, clapping, hissing, booming, any other expression of frustration, anger, or joy. Engaging in those things will make me very unhappy. Thank you. We will begin with opening statements from the candidates in two minutes. Then the candidates will be questioned by our questioners. Our regional news director at the Gazette, Mark Shear, and radio host and personality, Tom Darrow. Before I begin and we introduce the candidates, we're going to start our evening tonight with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let me begin by introducing the candidates who will be here tonight. The candidates are Sam Archie, Kristin Grandinetti, who we are told is on her way here from the city council meeting. Remind us if you watch through the door. William Kennedy, Robert Pascola, Andrew Tuma, and Chris Rochia. And we begin with opening statements. Mr. Archie, you were first.
Good evening. So, a little better? Good evening. I'd like to thank the Niagara Gazette for putting on this candidates debate tonight. I'm a lifelong resident here in the city of Niagara Falls. Married, my wife and I raised three boys. Two of them still living here in Niagara Falls. Over the years, I've been involved in numerous community organizations. The Kiwanis, High Park Little League, currently involved with the Freemasons, and Baywood Little League. Also volunteer at Niagara Falls Casino and Arts Festival. And I felt by becoming involved with a lot of these organizations is giving back to the city of Niagara Falls. I've also, over the years, have been involved in numerous political campaigns and all the while trying to do something better for the city. After the last mayoral race, I decided that was it for politics. I wasn't going to get involved anymore. But over the past few years, I just saw what was going on and I didn't feel confident with the leadership in the administration of the council majority that we were headed in the right direction. At that point, I decided to make a run for city council. I think we wasted too much money. We haven't taken opti- listened to our taxpayers. The city has been crumbling in certain areas. There are certain areas where crime has just gotten out of hand. I happen to live on the outskirts of the 4th, well, in the 4th district, and at night, it's amazing what you can hear out there. And we have a police force that I think is understaffed because they just can't keep up with what's going on. I think as a new councilman, I can help make a difference, maybe make a change in direction, change the attitude of the city of Niagara Falls. This is a great town. We actually did move away for about three years and came back because of what I believe here in the city of Niagara Falls. We can come back and we just have to change the attitude and the direction that the city's going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archie. Kristin Grandinetti.
Good evening and thank you to the Niagara Gazette. I too am a lifelong resident of the city of Niagara Falls. I'm a child of an immigrant and was raised in the small businesses, et cetera, until I decided to go back to school and become a teacher, which was a lifelong dream for me and I am proud and honored to do that job. I have been sitting on the city council for the last two terms and I am excited and happy about the way things have gone. I think we have made some great changes in the city. I think we are moving in the right direction. We started with our downtown core, it's starting to spread out. It's becoming more and more evident by the developers that have shown an interest in the area. It's not perfect and to quote someone very near indeed to me, dear to me, Niagara Falls is not perfect, but it's perfect for me. And I will continue to work hard and do my best for you. I will make myself available to you. As you know, if you try to contact me, you're very easy to get ahold of. I will work hard for you. There's nothing left for me to say except for that. I feel like we are going in the right direction. I know that myself and my colleagues work hard every day and I would like to get the opportunity to continue to serve you. There's some things that are in the pipes right now that I'd like to see through to fruition.
Thank you. William Kennedy.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you Niagara Gazette for having me as part of this wonderful forum. And for all of you Niagara Falls residents for taking the time out of your schedule to come and see us, introduce ourselves if you don't already know us and to get to know us. I was born and raised here in Niagara Falls. My mom grew up downtown. My dad grew up downtown. My dad then went and moved to Devote. I got to see the best and worst of both worlds, both sides of the city. I have worked amongst many of the youth organizations in the city. I've worked at the Niagara Falls Boys and Girls Club. I have volunteered at the YMCA. I have been part of the Sacred Heart Church Youth Organization where I was a counselor. Started as a junior counselor and worked my way up to where I was taking kids on trips on my own and doing all sorts of things in the community. I've also been part of the Big Brother and Big Sister Program. I decided that, at one point, I wanted to move out to California and pursue some of my acting dreams. And while I was out there, I realized that my family meant more to me than my acting dreams. And I came home to take care of my mother and to come back to a city that I saw in disarray. The erratic spending, the dilapidated homes, it just, it made me want to get involved and that's why I'm here tonight. So again, I thank you for coming and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Andrew Tuma.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the Niagara Gazette and WTJL for sponsoring this forum. I also want to thank you for electing me three and a half years ago so I could serve the city and serve the people. And I think the reason why I ran is because, three and a half years ago, is because it became less about the people and more about, I think, personal agendas. So, the only reason why I could run is because my wonderful wife, Jocelyn, allowed me to this, she gave me this chance to run because she's got the toughest job and that's raising our children at home while I come here and fight for the city and try to do the best for the city. So I want to thank her for doing that. She's amazing. And, you know, I am also a lifelong resident of Niagara Falls. I've worked in the school district for 23 years. And so I know the people in the city and I realize the issues that we have. I'm fully aware of them and you know why? Because I tackle them each and every day. You know, so I'm fully aware of what's going on and my job, I think, is to certainly try to help in that regard. Tonight, I want to talk about progress versus empty promises and really, I think, that's the most important thing. For example, you know, we were only collecting a half a million dollars, $500,000 in parking up until I became a councilman. Now, we've exceeded the $2 million mark. That's progress. Collectively, our homestead taxes have decreased by 12 cents per 1,000 of the assessed value in the last three years. To me, that's progress when you have a lot of people on fixed incomes here in the city. I also successfully facilitated reduction of healthcare expenses in the city, something that hadn't been done or couldn't be done in all the years that prior to me being a councilman. And that's a lot of money on the table. We're talking about millions of dollars down.
Am sorry, Andrew. Did you see the sign? YouTube returns.
Yeah, we didn't announce it. There it is. Stopwatch.
Thank you. Robert Pascola.
I've been known as a go-won, so I've made a prepared statement. I'd like to thank you, the people in the audience, for coming out tonight and to those of you watching at home. I'd also like to thank the Niagara Gazette for providing this opportunity. Nobody likes change. I know that very well. But if we want to change the way things are, we need to change the way we do things. There are three main issues I feel are most important to the future of Niagara Falls. The budget and how we tax and spend. Our crime rate and how that affects our growth and our quality of life. And economic development. What are we doing to bring home the basic? Each of these issues has a direct impact on our success as a people and as a city. My journey to this chair tonight began 15 years ago when I acted as a liaison for frustrated block club members and meeting dot landlords. We found areas of common ground and worked together on important societal issues. I spoke with hundreds of people, attended countless city council meetings, and lobbied our county legislature all to one end, improving the quality of life for people living in our neighborhoods. I drafted a set of health and safety enforcement protocols, inspired in part by the principles and four pillars to deal with our crime problem because it's not okay to be known as the most dangerous city in western New York. These protocols have been discussed with people in law enforcement, prosecution, and in the judiciary. Real solutions for real problems. People all over the city share something in common, but they feel like things are out of control and that nobody cares. That stops when you elect me for city council because I already care and I don't see myself stopping. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pascola. And finally, Chris Rochia.
Hello, everyone. I'd also like to thank the Niagara Gazette for hosting this. Can you hear me? I'd also like to thank-
Chris, just one second. You bring a good point here. If people have their cell phones in the audience, can you put them on vibrator stuff, please? Thank you. Then we won't be interrupting candidates. Thank you, Chris.
Sure. I'd like to thank the Niagara Gazette for, again, hosting this debate. This is a great public service. I am not a traditional candidate. I am not from Niagara Falls. I wasn't born and raised in Niagara Falls and I can't lean on that as a reason why you should vote for me. The fact is, I moved to Niagara Falls three short years ago to do a job. The company that owns the Niagara Gazette needed someone to come in and make some changes because the Niagara Gazette was not performing up to their financial expectations and quite frankly, it was a financial risk. So, I've been with the company that owned the Niagara Gazette for years. They knew me as a turnaround pro and they tasked me with the challenge of coming here to turn it around. And I will tell you that we did that. It wasn't easy. We had to make some very difficult decisions that involved a lot of painful and agonizing things. But, the Niagara Gazette today is strong and ready for the future. And when I look at that turnaround situation, and I look at the situation where employee morale at the Niagara Gazette was low when I got there, and how as we improved the financial performance, that changed, I really believe that is analogous to what the city of Niagara Falls faces. Because employee morale at the city of Niagara Falls, at least the city of the workers that I talked to, is not high. And our financial situation is on the verge of being catastrophic. And we need a turnaround approach to make some changes. So when you look at your candidates, your six choices on November 7th, you can look at who was born and raised here and who's a wonderful person and who's involved with this and who's involved with that, but really ask yourself, who has experience transforming organizations? And I've got that experience. And not just with the Niagara Gazette. I've got a 30-year track record in the private sector. The last half of that track record has been as a newspaper publisher all over the country. And I'm known as a guy who can go into failing situations and turn them around. And I really believe that sitting on the Niagara Falls City Council, I can make a difference in Niagara Falls. I believe I can have a beneficial impact on our city and all of you will see the results of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Gentlemen and ladies, I'm going to call the small local. I know I told you that we would do the questions alphabetically, but in light of our microphone situation, oh, you're good. All right, never mind. Stay with the alphabetical answers to the questions. Our first question tonight is going to come from our regional news director, Mark Shear.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for participating in this. I started with a question about the city's finances. That seems to be the first time I've started asking this. And we all know the city is facing financial challenges and the possibility of permanently losing millions of dollars in slot machine revenue each year. So what sort of steps would you recommend as a city council member to guide the city into a stronger financial condition?
Mr. Archie, you were first.
You're right.
Let's give that one more, one more question. I'll cut you right in there.
Okay. Well, that has been the key, though. The buzzword around the city, I don't know if you heard, are concerns with the loss of the casino revenue. Personally, I don't think we ever should have counted on using the full amount of casino revenue each year. If that property on the casino, that the casino was at, was valued at X amount of dollars, we say property attack, that's what we should have used for the general budget. The rest of it should have been funneled away for investment and development to our downtown and our city area. What we do, I think what we have to do is look at that entire budget line by line. See what jobs are necessary. See what we're overlapping. See what necessary services that we need and look at the jobs that are non, I don't want to say non-functional, but jobs that we can do without. The last thing you do is you hate to lose people. You hate to lose people because they don't want to have to go to work and worry about their job. But I think to see that it's such a situation that we have to look at the budget and see what's reasonable. See what dollars we have to spend and make those. My time's up.
Thank you, Mr. Archie. Ms. Grandinetti.
It's no secret that we do have some financial difficulties occurring within the city. Part of that is that we have 79% of our budget going to the government. I would like to agree to this complaint that is that our police and fire department are top-notch and they do a top-notch job. However, when people come in and talk to us about adding more police, adding more fire, you can't do that without raising taxes and nobody wants to raise taxes. As a matter of fact, just for a little bit of numbers here, our spending has increased only 10% over the last decade. And that is way under what inflation has meant. When you are paying wages and you are paying insurance and you are negotiating these contracts, this all costs money. We also live in a place where we have, we don't pay for garbage pickup. We have no removal. We have leave removal. These things are for free. Now, I agree that some changes have to be made. I also agree that my time is up for here.
Thank you, Ms. Grandinetti. Mr. Kennedy.
Hello? I'll get straight to the point. One of my things I like to see is, everybody always talks about, go write the cuts, right? So what are we going to do? We got to figure out the line here. How about we try growing? No one ever talks about trying to grow. I'd like to see us get involved in the county and work with the healthcare consortium. I'd also like to see USA Niagara, I think it's a million five that they get. That's a state-funded thing. We shouldn't be paying for that. We don't have the casino money. We shouldn't be paying for it. Cut it. Shared services. Why aren't we reaching out to some of the other areas around and trying to share our services with everybody? So, those are just a few of the ideas that I have. But the more people in that pool or that healthcare consortium, the lower the rates, the more money we save.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Tuma.
Well, when we realized that there was too much casino dollars being used in the general budget, I asked the mayor to create a multi-year plan to cut that amount. He didn't, but I did. We started with 15% first year, 10% after that to get down to a reasonable number where we could pay some bills and offset the tax base. Where the casino, the Seneca, but obviously 52 acres of our land. So that was the first and foremost thing we did. And then, I agree with Mr. Kennedy. The problem is that one of the things we didn't do as well is we didn't grow the city. And when I first came into office, I asked the mayor, I said, "Mayor, we have to build a tax base and attract new businesses to come in here and we have to build new homes." And we have that area, all areas around the city, especially from 4th to 10th, where we could have built a tax base through new development. And I think that would have attracted more businesses and really, you know, it would have been a really aggressive approach in doing so. So, I think there's two, there's two things to look at. One-
Just one minute.
When you wave the wand, let me time it off.
No, that's, time's up. We thought it might be too distracting.
We're going to do a 15-second beginning of the page. So we talk with 15-second warning.
All right, I'll do that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tuma. Mr. Pascola.
I think when it comes to hitting a brick wall, which we're about to in 2019, we'll be okay for 2018, I think it's probably important to ask the individual department heads themselves how they see modifying it. I don't have, certainly don't have enough experience to know what they need and what they don't need. And I've been told even by the fire department that they know their budget inside out. So the first thing I'd do is I'd show respect and I'd ask them what it was they could do to find modifications. Growth is a very, it's part of the prom, a true prom. One is your budget, the other is growth. Part of that is, will be enhanced when we get crime under control because not a lot of people want to come to a city where you've got a lot of crime and there's a lot of poverty. In fact, if you're aware, we're losing Key Bank and Bank of America on time.
15 seconds, right?
Yeah, you still have 15. So let me just tell you this about growth. Growth is like planting a tree. It takes time. It sounds good, but it's going to take a couple of years before you even get a client that's going to want to locate here and a couple more years. So that is a longer-term prospect.
Thank you, Mr. Pascola. Mr. Rochia.
I do agree with Bill that growth is really our solution and I'd love to say Niagara Falls up to be a magnet for development and investing and for nourishment, but it's going to be difficult to do that with such a high tax rate, especially on businesses. And now it's a tax rate that our mayor's proposed increasing by 14%. Back in May, I proposed what I call my 10-5 plan for Niagara Falls. It calls for two things. One, immediate 10% reduction in the payroll of all elected officials in the city. And whether that plan is approved or not, I'm going to give myself a 10% pay cut on day one. And the second part of the plan involved, like Bob just said, pulling employees and getting their input so that we can reduce the rest of the budget by 5%. Now, that alone will not solve all of our problems, but it will be a big first step. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rochia. Our next question comes from WTJL's Tom Darrow.
Thanks, Rick. Probably one of the biggest questions we could ask every day on the program is Niagara Falls redevelopment. Now, none of you who are on the council now or candidates had anything to do with that deal or proposal back in the 90s. I think the question is, is there anything we can do about it? And how long have we sit still and stay with nothing being developed and a great, great portion of our downtown area?
If I could add one other thing, on that note, similarly, Main Street, essentially owned by one, one or one person for many years, similar situation.
The question is, is how long have we in the city to sit still?
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Archie.
I mean, it's unfortunate that some of those contracts were never put in place to have some timeframes that we can force the developers to move forward on. I think this is something that really a lot of property needs to look at. You're right. How long do we sit on property that's downtown or up on Main Street? The Main Street property's been up for sale, sold, taken back, sold, I don't know how many times. We're being handcuffed by some of these developers. And I think maybe just at this point, we need to get back to the table with them and say, "Listen, this is what we need to do. We need to get off, off the table and get some development here." I think once that happens, it opens up a lot of doors for people wanting to come down into Niagara Falls.
Thank you, Mr. Archie. Ms. Grandinetti.
Before I answer that question, I would just like to say, the three contracts that we settled this year with our stew workers, our police, and our fire did get input from all of them and they all have made concessions. We may not see those savings immediately, but those contracts are over the next 10 years and they will show considerable savings to the city as well. Also, as far as NFR and the lack of development on Main Street, it's my opinion that these people are holding us hostage. We, as a city, I can't go into any details about it, we are currently in our legal department, have a plan moving forward with both the Main Street developer as well as NFR to put a stop to what is happening down there. There has to be certain laws put into place before we can affect a landlord's private land. But, without going into details, I'm sorry, but we are working on both of those things in getting that land back into the hands of the city. Because we have people that are interested both in the NFR development and also in the Main Street development. I know that's, I know it's not a very comforting answer, but it is in fact the truth.
Thank you, Ms. Grandinetti. And Mr. Tuma.
I believe the question is, how long do we wait? We don't. I think we need to engage in a better dialogue with NFR and seriously start getting some hardcore negotiations done, having the law department get involved. And, I mean, there's a lot of land that can be developed there and obviously, we all know that. But I think the dialogue engagement is essential. I mean, if we have to continuously meet, then let's do that. I don't think we can wait. And that, to me, is the answer. Let's not wait. Let's continue to push and push and push.
Mr. Tuma.
Part of the problem is that when I came into office, I mentioned to the mayor that we should bring Mr. Trevino and Mr. Milstein to the table and make sure that we have an open dialogue with them. And I think that dialogue has been closed for quite some time and that's been a problem. Hopefully, the new arena is the beginning. You know, we'll have to look into that and see where that goes in the future. But, I've been encouraging the mayor publicly and privately to move towards eminent domain with Main Street and really take over those properties and use some of those casino dollars, and this is three years ago, use some of those casino dollars instead of on roads in some areas on roads, but to invest that in, on Main Street and then repurpose it and get it ready for other businesses to come in. So there's things that we could have done in the past that we haven't done and certainly, we need to continue to have that dialogue. And the problem is, when you, when you push people away and you don't talk to them, things get closed and things don't move.
Thank you, Ms. Tuma. Mr. Pascola.
Well, there are laws for people who own property, so we really, you know, unless we can find some kind of a, you know, new law. However, talking about Roger Trevino, the first time I spoke with him was on the phone. I asked him how much the turtle was. He told me it was $3 million. A year and a half later, I met him in person. I asked him how much the turtle was. He said it was $12 million. It didn't sound to me like he was really serious about selling it. Then I did get serious with him. I said, "How much would you charge?" So I actually did talk to Mr. Trevino. I said, "How much you think Mr. Milstein wants for all that big swath of land?" And I said, "Really? If somebody gave you a deal, $1 million an acre is what he told me." The problem is, we don't have a listing. You know, like a realtor, a realtor has a listing agreement that is, that you're bound to that price. But if you really wanted it for $1 million, now let's go out and find that developer that wants to spend $1 million an acre for 115 acres and develop it.
Thank you, Ms. Pascola. Mr. Rochia.
So, a couple of problems here. First of all, if you talk to developers who want to do business or who have done business in Niagara Falls, you might find that it's not the most hospitable place for a developer to do business in. And if that's the case, then why would we expect someone who owns swaths of land in Niagara Falls to develop it? How do you force a developer to do something with that land if they feel like it's going to be more of a headache than it's worth? Secondly, I've heard tonight, we, as a city, need to take it, take it, take it, maybe throw them in domain. Does the city really have a great reputation of doing great things that we feel so comfortable that we take property from a private developer and give it to city government? My gosh, I don't have that confidence. And if I did, I would not be running for city council. I'd say, "Everything's running fine as it is. Don't, there should be no election. Just keep the current council in place." But we've got a problem, folks, and I think it's endemic in some of what we heard tonight.
Crime has already been mentioned a couple of times in public safety.
Crime has already been mentioned a couple of times in public safety as an issue in the city. Um, what would you, uh, what would you do as a councilman to address issues with crime and public safety without negatively impacting the city's bottom line? Mr. Archie.
Well, definitely crime is, is an issue here in the city in Niagara Falls. You know, unfortunately, now, unfortunately, fortunately, I think we've got a great police force here, uh, Chief Del Porto gets his men out there as much as he can. Thing is, we don't have enough policemen on the streets, and without taxing residents, it doesn't look like we can do that. I think maybe some aggressive scheduling to get guys out there more often, uh, moving things around. And then it comes down to the courts. I mean, the, the city can only do so much. Uh, once the police do their job and these criminals collect better, uh, go to the court system, a lot of them are out in the next day. Uh, I saw one arrest not that long ago, the guy was arrested at fifty-nine times, and he's back on the streets. And so, a lot of it isn't the police department's fault, it's, it's the criminal system and the court system.
Thank you, Mr. Archie, and Ms. Grant and I.
Number one, I'm proud of our police force, and regardless of, of what it says out there in the, on the streets, uh, the patterns of cause have not changed basically over the last two decades in the city of Niagara Falls. And there is documented proof that crime is actually down here. I'm not saying that crime doesn't happen, I'm not saying that there are pockets of crime, and you can...
Once again, I've gotta remind you, folks, no expression.
You can laugh if you want, I'll pro, I can provide the numbers for you. There are neighborhoods that are struggling, there are neighborhoods where there are pockets of crime. But I assure you that our police force is working to its maximum. And if you would like me to provide those numbers for you, I can. Our crime rates are down here. But we all have to take responsibility for this as well. If you see something going on, you need to say something. And we need to support our neighborhoods, we need to support our block clubs, and we need to be a part of the solution, not just be negative and not just complain.
Thank you, Ms. Grant and I, and Mr. Kennedy.
Well, one of the first things we have to do is we have to be proactive versus being reactive all the time. So I would like to see our neighborhoods get revitalized, that's gonna help reduce the crime. Um, I just think growing, again, I'm gonna say this on every, every question you ask me, it's gonna resort back to growth. We have to grow our economy, we have to grow our tax base, we have to grow, grow, grow. So we revitalize our neighborhoods, obviously, some of the crime situations resort back to proper parenting, but I'd like to see our, our code enforcement, our neighborhood revitalized, and you'll start seeing some of that, some of the people get jobs and things like that, then you'll see those crime rates go, go down, and let Niagara Falls be a little happier place.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and Mr. Tuma.
Well, thankfully, we have some great block clubs and, and people who take it upon themselves to fight the good fight each and every day. Um, and, you know, when, when crime, when shootings took place, I walked with pastors and police, uh, in different neighborhoods where the shootings took place to tell people they saw something, say something. And so, that's how we, I think, as council people can get involved. We also gave our police officers, uh, the funding to put cameras up, uh, in hotspots to, um, you know, certainly to get the training they needed. And, you know, based on, uh, the other thing we need to do is we need to, um, get more training facilities here so we can get people to work and off the streets and put, make sure that they're, they're doing something productive here in Niagara Falls. Um, and according to the FBI statistics, I gotta tell you, uh, the level of, and this just came out in Buffalo News, uh, the crime, even though we have our challenges and we have some issues, our crimes did drop two percent from fifteen and sixteen, but here's the issue. The issue is that it's systemic, we have to fix the systemic issues because we still have the arrests going on, and we have, we had one person with forty-six, we had to deny six arrests. That's a big problem here in Niagara Falls. We need to work on the system, go to the state.
Thank you, Mr. Tuma.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pascal.
So, over the course of time, I spoke with a lot of different people and, uh, did a lot of reading, and came up with the health and safety enforcement protocols. Five steps that we can actually take to reduce crime. The first is nine cops on the beat. That's, that is just a number, it's a proposal. It can be done through reallocation within the side of the apartment, or we can look for grant funding because we are a board of town, Homeland Security, sometimes these grants overlock.
There's already nine on the beat, Bob.
Excuse me, I...
There's already nine on the beat.
Andrew, no interruptions. I'm talking nine more on the beat.
Nine more?
Mr. Tuma.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, I, I also think that the, the, the second one is to, uh, enforce the nuisance ordinance. We have a lot, I mean, nuisance is anything that annoys you, and we're not doing a good job with enforcing the nuisance ordinance. I spent three years with some of the block club members trying to get that, uh, that accomplished, and the block club is very frustrated by it. Uh, create no-please zones, we can't do the entire city, but we can take sections that are troublesome, we can do no-please zones. Uh, the police field is a revolving door. Community prosecution, and the fifth one is canine license censor, uh, license, uh, census. This is where we keep track of dogs that have in the city, make sure they have license. We have a real big dog problem in the city.
Mr. Pascal. I know you interrupted, but, but, Mr. Archie.
So, I'm not a policeman, never have been, probably couldn't do the job, I'm not an attorney, I'm not a judge, and I'm not a district attorney. But I see the police chief in the back, and I know a lot of the police officers who walk the streets, and I know a lot of the detectives, and I can tell you this, they know how to fix the problem. So instead of telling you, "This is what we need to do, we need to do this, that, and the other," the first thing we need to do is call, whether it's a summit or whatever, with all the people who are involved, not just the police chief, but the frontline people, the people who represent them in their unions, the police club, which do not endorse me, by the way, but that's okay, I love those folks anyway. We need to pull those folks together, district attorney, out of lockport, um, and say, "What do we need to do? We need to fix this problem." Because the fact of the matter is, public safety is the primary role of government, it's the reason why it's, it exists. And if we don't make that priority one, everything else is, uh, nonsense. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Rocha. We go now to Tom Darrow.
You have all been campaigning quite a while now, walking the neighborhoods, listening to the constituents. Aside from police and fire, what's the main concern that you're hearing from the constituents in the city?
Well, Archie, the biggest thing I hear from people is that they, they, they lack confidence in city hall, and they're, they're tired of all the waste of spending that's gone on, and they don't feel they're getting the value for their tax dollar. I mean, I realize that as council members, you represent the entire city, but each, each division of the city, each section of the city has some specific problems. So there are pockets out there where they, they feel they've been neglected, their voices haven't been heard. And, and looking at it, it could probably be true. You know, as much as we have to look at everything, there are specific areas that, that people have specific city hall problems and situations. You know, the lack of confidence in city hall and the out-of-control spending is probably the biggest beef that residents have had as they've gone door to door.
Thank you, Mr. Archie, and Ms. Grant and I.
The concerns that I have heard from people in the city are mostly about jobs and about having safe activities for our kids. I think that, um, we're moving in the right direction with some of the developments that's been going on, because I have heard some really positive things as well about the downtown area and how it's very welcoming not just to tourists, but to the locals as well. I think that was a good place for us to start. I think we had a lot of infrastructure to rebuild, and now that we have done that, we will be able to attract and tackle more things to create more jobs and also to make it a better and safer place for our kids. That to me is, especially being a teacher and living in the downtown area, that is one of the most important things that I think that we can do moving forward, looking at jobs and looking at safe entertainment for kids.
Thank you, Ms. Grant and I, and Mr. Kennedy.
I'm gonna break this into two separate walks, because I went ninety-three out of a hundred days prior to the primary, and the biggest concern that I heard was reassessments. And I'm here to tell all of you, 'cause a lot of people are wondering, at this time, I am against reassessments to, to basically take care of the issues that we have right now. There's no way that I could actually vote on that, I want the citizens of Niagara Falls to know that I am a candidate for the people, and I want you all to know that we are highly taxed, and I, I, I would never approve of something like that right now. But do keep in mind, in the future, it is something that we should really look into. There are a lot of properties that, you know, someone wants, has a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, but they wanna sell it for four hundred thousand dollars, and they haven't been taxed in thirteen, fourteen years. So there's a little bit of give and take. The second part of that, um, this time has been the proposed tax increase. And how in the hell are we supposed to entice people to come develop here if businesses are getting a fourteen percent tax rate out of the top?
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and Mr. Tuma.
Well, I also have walked, uh, quite a bit, talked to a lot of people. Uh, one of the things that people have concern about is the, really, the lack of support we're getting from our state. And they're very concerned that, uh, we don't get any, we don't get a dime from our state parks, from the power authority, and they feel that the city's been short-changed, and you know what? They're right. But at the same time, obviously, uh, you know, we have to take care of our own expenses. Do you know in Troy, New York, in Troy, New York, their expenses are at sixty-six, um, million dollars. Here in Niagara Falls, our expenses are at eighty-eight million. Now, they have a similar population. How are they doing? They're twenty-two million dollars less than we are. That's because I think they have a leadership at the administration that cut expenses, and that's what needs to happen. And that's what they're upset about. But they're also upset about the fact that, um, you know, they wanna make sure that we take care of the blight in neighborhoods too, because there are too many abandoned homes, we gotta make sure that we address those situations.
Thank you, Mr. Tuma, and Mr. Pascal.
Well, I think the three major things that I've heard the most are the three issues that I brought up at the very beginning of my opening statement, jobs, crime, and the budget. I also think that a lot of people feel as though some of the comments are out of touch with reality. Thank you.
Mr. Rocha.
I have walked a lot of streets and knocked on a lot of doors. I've walked every ward, every district and every street. In fact, the folks who live in the, I started in the north and swept through the city, and the Napolitanos are here, they, I think, were the first household I met with, they looked at the very northern tip of the, of the city in Debo. And it all comes down, what I heard in terms of your question, it all comes down to quality of life. It's life, it's crime, it's taxes, um, but if you had to sum it up into one ball of wax, it would definitely be quality of life. And we've gotta improve that. Our citizens ju, just don't feel like they're getting their bang for their buck. What Andy just pointed out in terms of what we're paying compared to what Troy's paying, that's, that means our price for our quality of life is a lot higher than it would be if you lived in Troy, New York. So what we need to do is figure out how to grow the economy, how to reduce our expenses, and how to improve quality of life. It's as simple as that. It's very difficult to do, but it's simple to summarize. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rocha, uh, Mr. Sher.
Uh, since Mr. Kennedy brought it up, and, uh, actually, this was a question submitted by one of our readers, uh, and a resident named, uh, William Faiths, um, he wanted to know what everyone thinks of the, uh, proposition of having a reassessment, um, you know, if you support it, why, if you don't, why not?
Mr. Archie.
Thank you. Well, reassessment, another hot topic. Reassessment, if it was done properly, is good for the taxpayer. You reassess when your property be worth more, your rate per thousand would come down, also, your county, your school taxes would decrease. I'm against reassessment for this administration because I feel that their main purpose with reassessment is to get them out of the financial crunch that they put themselves into by trying to build that, make up for that eleven million dollar shortfall that we'll be looking at in the future. Right now, reassessments, I definitely vote no for it. Down the road, if the things change, reassessment could be a good thing for the people in Niagara Falls.
Thank you, Mr. Archie, and Ms. Grant and I.
Unfortunately, reassessment has become, um, a political thing as opposed to what's best for the city. We currently do not have the funding to carry out a reassessment. We would need to have some assistance from probably the state, to be very frank with you. And I have to agree with Mr. Archie that in the long run, if a reassessment is done, it will actually be beneficial and even things out for the entire city. But that's not going to be happening anytime soon because it would cost between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars to do a decent reassessment. And how we could have avoided this is doing what most municipalities do, and that's doing a reassessment either every five years or every ten years. So it's, I have to say that we have to take some of the responsibility for that because it could be a political thing.
Thank you, Ms. Grant and I, and Mr. Kennedy.
Well, I already gave you my stance, but I would like to let you know that I've become very educated with the process, took the time to learn the process, how much it would cost, what areas would be affected, what areas, there's, there's some people that are actually against it, and they live in an area where their taxes would probably go down. So before anybody starts complaining about it, you know, understand where you live and where you, what money is gonna go where. I would like, it's gonna, it's gonna have to happen, but what I would like to see in the future is that we put in some type of legislation where we say, "We're gonna reassess every five years or every ten years," or something like that. So, but at this point, I would not go for reassessment to cover up the erratic spending that's been going on in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and Mr. Tuma.
Well, actually, I, I know I've heard that from a few people, cover-ups, I heard, uh, from Mr. Pascal, a money grab with reassessment. Well, the truth of the matter is, and people can't, that, you know, here's the truth. The truth is that we have a two-tiered tax system in our city. We have, uh, we have the non-residents who are paying thirty-three dollars and, and some change, and then we have the residents paying seventeen dollars. That's a big problem. Reassessment should bring that even. And by the way, I don't know if you knew this, but residents right now, by the way, doesn't increase the tax levy. If you have seventeen, we have, uh, thirty million dollars we collect in tax levy, it will not change during a reassessment. Seventeen is collected from residents, thirteen, commercial. It's out of whack. And we have, in, in fact, in Debo, they've been assessed twice compared to other people in other parts of the city. I'm hearing it on the other end. It's not fair. So I asked my candidates next to me, "Well, what would you do to change that inequity? What would you do?" Because that's the only way you do it. That's the only way you do it. It's not a money grab, and it's not unfair, it's something that's done, and by the way, it's the law. It's the law. So that's something that we seriously have to look at, very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuma, and Mr. Pascal.
There was a city council meeting last year, I spoke out against the tax assessments 'cause I don't trust this current administration, I've said it again. The, uh, the problem that we have is that the system is out of whack because we're paying way too much for our property. I, I've lived in, in California now since nineteen eighty-eight, moved here in two thousand and three, and they use the Prop-13 method. The fair market value is what a willing, ready willing and able seller will sell to a ready willing and able buyer. Why we need to get this thing assessed is beyond me, because then you can play numbers, what's, what's it really worth? And then the second variable is, is that what's the tax rate? We just really had a tax assessment, in a way, de facto. By raising it two-point-six on residential and fourteen percent on business, we've just lowered the value of your property. So I, I, I think that when you look at Zillow right now and see fifty dollars a square foot for an average price here, until we get it to a hundred dollars a square foot, you will not see new construction because it doesn't make economical sense.
Thank you, Mr. Pascal, and Mr. Rocha.
I think the problem with reassessment and why it's become a lightning rod in this climate right now is because we're so financially challenged that people are floating it as a possible way to solve that problem, and that means tax increase. And I do oppose the idea of doing a reassessment for the purposes of raising revenue. I've heard it's an equalization, it's a rebalancing, and it, and it usually is, I've lived in plenty of municipalities and plenty of states where we've done, where reassessment was done every, you know, ten years, and that's the way it should be. But because it's being mentioned right now as a way to help solve our problem, that, that spells tax increase to me. And we're already overtaxed right now. So I would oppose it if it's done in the, in the, in the realm of increasing our revenues So I would oppose it if it's done in the realm of increasing our revenues to the city. There are ways, I would love to see revenues to the city increased through economic development, but not through shifting with the idea of a reassessment. I would support a regularly scheduled reassessment down the road, if it was going to be done in a methodical way, in a way that was spelled out clearly, in a way that made it clear that it was not designed to raise revenues, but merely rebalance. Thank you.
Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Sorry, Mr. Darrell. I am hearing a lot tonight from the candidates regarding growth. And as I look across some businesses, brick-and-mortar businesses across the nation, not just here, are closing because of online buying, that is putting them out of business. If we could empty the malls and put them back down on Ball Street and Main Street, we had Niagara Falls in nineteen fifty-six, but that's not going to happen. Nationally, businesses are closing because of online buying. How do we attract commercial business in Niagara Falls with these things in mind?
Mr. Arch.
Well, I mean, we're probably all guilty of online buying, in fact. Bet, have my time doing online buying. But how we attract people, I think being in Niagara Falls is a tourist destination. Estimated eight-and-a-half million people, visitors come here to Niagara Falls. If we developed it downtown, promoted it with not just summer months, but some year-round activity to draw tourists downtown, businesses, I think, will come downtown. They're going to have the shops there, word will spread around. We can make Niagara Falls safe, people will enjoy coming down there. But the thing is, we need year-round activities to which to draw those people, to make it viable for businesses to come down to Niagara Falls and to attract them.
Thank you, Mr. Arch. And Ms. Grantan.
I think that we have a little less to worry about with online shopping because we do have the falls here. I think that what we have, we've got a great start going downtown. We have, our hotels are built, we have some attractions that are coming in. There's going to be a couple of announcements this week about other developments that are happening. And I spend a lot of time downtown because I live downtown. I shop down there, I eat down there, I walk down there, I live downtown. So I do see the positive things that are happening. And I think what we are doing is starting to attract some smaller businesses that are coming from Erie County and coming from other destinations, even anchored by our opening up downtown Niagara Falls. Who would ever have thought that that would happen? Things are moving in the right direction in downtown, and sometimes you have to start somewhere and let it spread out. I don't think all this negativity is helping us. I think we're doing some really good things downtown.
Thank you, Ms. Grantan. And Mr. Kennedy.
Well, one of the ideas that I've been talking about with a few of my friends and other residents is that we have this beautifully aesthetic train station downtown, we have all this room in there, and I thought about, well, why don't we entice some of the Canadian developers and Canadian marketplace to use it decent for storage? And I'm not talking about like bringing in bars and shops, like literally sell that space down at the train station since we're looking for ideas to utilize down there. The other thing is that I cross the border six or seven times a week. They had that big expansion at the Lewis and Pisten Bridge. I think we should set up some warehousing and transportation services over in the Highland area. There's a lot of area there to be developed. I think that would be something where we could, you know, utilize some growth and then obviously start recycling the expenses and the revenue that we receive.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Tuma.
Well, when I first got into office, I mentioned to the mayor that we need to start using more casino dollars towards economic development. So in the last three years, we have invested, subsidized, small business, large business, over two million dollars of casino dollars, which turned into fifty million of private development money, which turned into over three hundred jobs, two-hundred-and-fifty of which are full-time. So certainly, I think that's, you know, looking at that, the businesses are coming here. The online purchasing, you know, obviously, it's going to continue to happen. But you know what? Our sales tax and our HRU, the hotel restaurant utilities tax, we continue to collect or increase the amount of money that we get from those. We're into the seventeen million dollar range with regard to sales tax in this county and HRU, which is hotel restaurant utilities. So the money's coming in, they're still buying here locally, so it's not really having a huge impact here.
Thank you, Mr. Tuma. Mr. Vescall.
One minute, one idea. If we take a look at the different property that's out there, we find the building property is locked, we find Main Street is pretty much locked. Where are we going to build? So we have short, medium, and long-term goals. If we look at it short-term for one minute, we take a look at fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, it doesn't look like much right now, but it's prime property. That's why we put so hard to keep the Metronom City from moving into Sixth and Wallin. That property can be used for vacation rentals plus the zone RC3, which means that not only can you put vacation rentals, but you can also put in things like artisans, you can put in craft shops, you can put in jewelry. You do like what they did in New Mexico. Also, just imagine this, when you have two-family, 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 and you're able to rent these out at a vacation rental of two to two-fifty per night per side, that's a lot of money. It makes sense to fix that property up. And what happens when you take a street that's like this and you turn it up like that, you've got a horizontal hotel.
Thank you, Mr. Vescall. And Mr. Boach.
The demise of retail has been going on since a guy named Sears and Johnny Grobuck were together over a hundred years ago. And quite frankly, the demise of retail wouldn't impact, our economic and the cannot be retail, just as it cannot be hotel jobs. We need to attract business and industrial and tech development, medical development. With medical, we've got a perfect, you know, situation with the Niagara Falls Memorial Medical Center corridor there and the plans they've got there. So I'm not really worried, I don't like stay awake at night worried about the demise of retail, because quite frankly, I'm not sure it's going to happen. And if it did, I don't think chasing away those jobs are our biggest financial jeopardy. I think our problem is we need to set ourselves up as a magnet so that we can attract other job creators, including maybe ones that are the source of the problem you're talking about, like Amazon. That's not going to happen, but there are smaller entities that we can attract.
Thank you, Mr. Boach. Ms. Scher.
This question was submitted by Norma Edgs, a longtime community advocate and longtime Black Club member. She just wanted to know very simply, what do you think should be done to improve the quality of life in city neighborhoods?
I think the first thing we need to look at is all the blight and the condemned buildings in various neighborhoods. You know, if you drive around town in certain areas, and it gets depressing, you know, and doing numerous campaigns over the past fourteen years, I've walked so many same streets. And each year, walking through these streets, the neighborhoods look worse and worse. We need to put the money into condemning some of these buildings, we need them torn down instead of just putting plywood on them and a condensed, condensed line and letting them rot. That only attracts the negative elements that's within the city. So a concerted effort has to be made to get these buildings tore down. If you had neighbors on both sides of these condemned buildings, give them property, let them split the property in half, put it back on the tax bill, let them decrease the size of their home or something, or make their property. Thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Arch. And Ms. Grantan.
As I said before, I teach, and I live in the downtown area, and so I want these neighborhoods to be safe for our kids. But we do have some things that have just come into place. One of them being, we have, now we have an employee with the city in Niagara Falls who is focusing specifically on the blight and on the zombie homes that we have in the area. I have, however, noticed that there's been an influx, particularly, I'd say, on Woolpool Street, where I had seen in the last few months, seven, eight, nine homes that have been bought up and are being refurbished. I'm also seeing that there are, there's a new demographic that we haven't had here in a long time moving into the city, which is our late twenties to early forties that are moving in, they're buying houses, they're fixing them up. I see some of them in the audience right now. And I have to say that I know we have a long way to go, but I honestly think that we are starting to move in the right direction. You know, we have an infrastructure for a hundred thousand people that we have to maintain, and there's only fifty thousand people here. But that still has to be maintained.
Thank you, Ms. Grantan. And Mr. Kennedy.
Niagara Falls has forty-six percent mortgage-free houses in the city. So what we need to do is we need to establish a program that will utilize that equity to rejuvenate and renovate, reestablish our neighborhoods.
Mr. Tuma.
I think one of the things we need to do is we need to go to Albany, and we need to lobby that folks who have, for example, three misdemeanor's, there's harsher consequences for those folks. We keep putting the same people back on the street, it's crime against crime. And really, living here my whole life, you know, I feel, you know, I feel that I can raise my family here, and that's what I do. You know, we talked about getting something for our teenagers to do. So we work really hard to get that skate park together on High Park. And you know what? They are using that till it's fullest, each and every day. We have adults to young kids reusing that. So we need to make sure we have safe places for our kids to go. And, and you know what? Back to our housing real quick. You know, our housing market is very interesting, because we have, our house used to sell for eighty thousand dollars, now they're up to eighty-five thousand. They're selling at twenty-four days, they're only on the market for twenty-four days, and they're selling for twenty-four percent above assessed value. That's progress. That's progress.
Thank you, Mr. Tuma. Mr. Vescall.
There's such a thing called a bid, a business improvement district. I'd like to try a prototype called a MIT, a Neighborhood Improvement District. This would take it to the community level, get the actual people who live in the neighborhoods involved. Some of the things that you would need to really do is being to beef up that nuisance ordinance. This is where the grass gets long and the trash is there. I'd like to see a change in ordinance that allows a landlet. We have a high percentage of landlets, I'd like to see that percentage come down. Call up DPW and say, "Give me a ticket." And while you're doing it, give a ticket to the person in the house. It's about, you have to modify behavior in these neighborhoods. Also, a lighting district. This is where, right now, you've got a light on every pole. What a lighting district does is allow you to put a light on every other pole. Once again, once you create that Neighborhood Improvement District, these are all kind of things that can be put into place, becomes a legal entity.
Thank you, Mr. Vescall. And Mr. Boach.
Norma, the way to improve and enhance quality of life in the neighborhoods is to attract people who are homeowners, who want to take care of their homes, who are private property owners, and who understand the American dream involves taking care of your property. And unfortunately, every single neighborhood in this city has some element that doesn't take care of their property, and there's so much blight going on. And quite frankly, walking the streets of Niagara Falls, including the streets of Cayuga Island and Debo, where I didn't expect to see it, and I did see it, and so I published an idea that was a rip-off of a Bob Conquer idea, which was a war on blight in Niagara Falls. Basically, I called for creating an almost civilian conservation corps-like program whereby we would take our youth every summer and create an army of these kids who would go out, almost like an AmeriCorps-type program, and clean up our city. Between cleaning up the city and attracting people to the city who want to be property owners, that's how we're going to solve that problem.
Thank you, Mr. Boach. Ladies and gentlemen, there'll be time for that later. Mr. Darrell.
Candidates, in addition to other revenue streams, the city of Niagara Falls drives vet tax to tourism agencies in the city of all tourism. I'd be interested in your thoughts on whether you think we're getting enough for our money, and if you have any good suggestions on operating.
The vet tax money's always been a tug-of-war. We do get the tourists in here, I think they are getting a big amount of people, they're based on those dollars. But we really don't see any numbers. We say, "We got X amount of dollars, we brought this many tourists in, and they spent X amount." But, you know, it's all centered around being downtown. We need to give them something that they can filter out into the Pine Avenue area. Main Street, if everything is developing, can filter into the Main Street area. But it's really hard to judge what impact it is, at least on a visual aspect, because everything's centered on being downtown. Let's see those people getting more out into the area. Of course, you go to the D and D, that's your outlet mall, that place is constantly packed. Thank you very much.
Ms. Grantan.
The vet tax money that we share with our other entities in the city, I think is money well-spent. I used to be in the hospitality business. I know what it takes to bring people into the area. And those other parts of the year, other than the summer, we call them the shoulder months. When you want things to happen during the shoulder months, you have to rely on agencies that are going to go out and sell the area. That being said, we made a huge investment in the last two years into the trolley, which does provide free transportation to as far out as Fort Niagara and as far out in the other direction as the Outlet Mall. Not everybody that comes to Niagara Falls wants to go to the Outlet Mall. Not everybody that comes to Niagara Falls wants to go to Fort Niagara. Not everyone wants to stay downtown. I have an Airbnb in my home, and I get a pretty clear picture of what people's expectations are when they come here. And I tell you that they are liking it more than you think they are, and they're spending money, and they are coming back.
Mr. Kennedy.
I'm actually kind of neutral on this one. I feel like it is money well-spent, but I also feel like we just don't, we don't actually see all of the results, and we get back and forth. I have the opportunity to bring a lot of the tourists back and forth from all of the different airports, and I'd like to see us make some trails of breadcrumbs out of the state into Pine Avenue, into Main Street, onto Niagara Street, and I want to see those areas get revitalized. And I just feel like, you know, the biggest, we have to keep money circulating, well, that's the big thing. I've been saying since day one, I'm going to continue to say it, but I think, I think, like I, I really feel like it is money well-spent, but I would like to see better results.
Mr. Tuma.
Well, I happen to disagree with Ms. Grantan. Look, the hotel is tagged five percent onto the bill for the tourists, right? And one percent, which is about seven-hundred thousand dollars, goes to the trolley. Then the eighty percent of that four percent goes to NTCC, and they also get a seven-and-a-half from, seven-and-a-half percent from the casino dollars off the top. It's way too much. It's a state law, we need to go to lobby in Albany to give more. We only get twenty percent of that four percent. It's not enough. It's not enough. When I tell people that, they're like, flabbergasted. Like, "That's all we get? That's all we get." So I think less, I think the city needs to give less to NTCC, bring more into our coffers and offset some of our expenses. And, you know, and that's been a problem for a while, so we need to go to Albany and lobby for more, and lobby your representatives in Albany. Thank you.
Mr. Vescall.
This is positively biblical. I agree with Andy.
You'll come around.
On the couple of times I've seen reports that were in the city council, what I've heard mostly was click-through rates, and that's just one of those sciences that I'm not fully convinced of yet. And I think we could probably get a click-through company to do it for a lot cheaper, you know, pay for it. So I'm just not really seeing it. I don't want to be critical, but, because I had, I'd really liked to study a little bit more before I did, but right now, I'm thinking we're not getting enough bang for our buck.
Mr. Boach.
I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on travel and tourism and tourism marketing. I know John Percy, I think he does a great job, but clearly, with the straits that we're in, every dollar that goes out needs to be carefully scrutinized. And I think accountability is important, I think one of the other candidates mentioned it, accountability's got to be critical. And so maybe some of the skepticism and questions that have been expressed on this panel tonight would be soothed if we could, you know, bring in the folks from NTCC, Destination Niagara, what have you, in on a regular basis for a thorough Q and A type of thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Boach. We have come to the final question that I, that'll be for Mr. Scher.
Is this the hot dog question?
No. It's actually a two-part question, I guess. The first part would be, do you think it's the council's role to get involved in this casino revenue dispute? And if so, what do you think the council member should be done with that?
Mr. Arch.
I mean, that topic, since the money was cut off, that topic's been hot and heavy. I don't think it's the council's position to get involved in negotiations for the entire amount of casino funding. I think maybe to sit down with them and see what type of reimbursement they can give for police and fire protection, I think that's something that the council can sit down and speak to the council, and speak to the casino on. But other than that, the slot revenue, I think that's totally out of our hands, and that's something that, unfortunately, the state has to negotiate. Seeing that Governor Foam already laughed at us about it, that we should make him roll, I don't know how much work is going to help us with that.
Ms. Grantan.
Let me say upfront that I feel that the arbitration that's going on right now is going to be settled, and it will be settled in our favor. That being said, I don't think it's the council's place to do that. What ends up happening is, because we're the monkey in the middle, with the state and the Senecas, if we start to get involved, it breaks down whatever negotiations are going on, and they tend to play us against each other. The arbitration is in place, it's a fair process, it's going to play itself out, but I don't think that it is a responsibility, nor is it appropriate for the council to be involved in those negotiations.
Mr. Kennedy. By law, we can't. So I really wouldn't want us to be involved in that anyway. I think it would be completely counterproductive. If the money comes back, we obviously, we've got to start budgeting it for, you know, an Economic Development Fund, but there is no place for us to be a part of that negotiation. The arbitration is there, let it play out, see where those, you know, see where everything falls, and then go from there.
Mr. Tuma.
I think I'm probably the only one up here that did meet with President Gates from the Senecas, and here's why. Well, first of all, I represent the people in Niagara Falls, so I need to know what they're thinking, and they need to know what I'm thinking. So we had an open dialogue. Mr. Boach talks about dialogue. I talk to more people than you can shake a stick at. But here's the thing, we weren't at the table when they took seventy-five percent of that But here's the thing, we weren't at the table when they, when they took 75% of that money away from us, right? So we need to know what they're thinking. And guess what? All those years ago, three or four years ago, uh, when they held out and didn't pay us, they knew what they were doing. They, they negotiated that, they, they made $200 million more than they would've gotten. And so there, there's a plan in place here for them, and I wanted to know what they're thinking. Well, I was told the revenues are down. They're trying to make that up probably through the state share. So we can't, we can't negotiate with a sovereign nation, but I can tell you, I can be your voice and listen to what they have to say, and if that deal ends, I'm gonna be right there negotiating for Niagara Falls to make sure that we get our fair share.
Mr. Pascal. This is one of those questions where the incumbents have the advantage of inside information, and that's just the way that it is. I don't know where, where we stand on this contract. I've read where it looks like we can't be salvaged, and now I'm hearing that they, they're in arbitration. I've heard where, uh, Governor Cuomo has threatened to build a casino. So what is the average person to think? Let me, and I'll find out.
Mr. Ochoa.
Well, because it is going to arbitration at this point, it probably would be inappropriate for multiple city elected officials or employees or what have you to, to be, you know, sticking their nose, uh, under the tent at this point. However, as a city councilman, I would feel perfectly comfortable talking with anybody, with a private developer, with someone from the Senecas, with anybody who has the best interests of Niagara Falls at heart. And quite frankly, I think we have to view the Senecas, and we have to try to position ourselves to make us so that the Senecas want to be a partner with us in the rebirth of Niagara Falls. We don't wanna have an adversarial relationship. I don't want another Indian War. They could be our greatest champion, our greatest partner, but we're not gonna do that in an adversarial way. So, and as Andy said, I think dialogue is critical, and I'd be open to that with, with them or anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Well, that concludes the question and answer portion of our debate. Thank you again for the respect you have shown to our candidates. We're gonna ask the candidates to each begin with, uh, to each conclude now with a one-minute statement. After those statements are concluded, I promise I will give you all the opportunity you wish to show your emotions. Uh, I will thank you in advance though for coming out tonight, and thank you for your participation and for engaging with us and with the candidates. It's what makes American democracy as great as it is. Mr. Archie, you are.
Thank you very much. Again, I'd like to thank the Gazette, lots of thanking wonderful people for being here and then sitting through this and listening to us. I also like to thank the candidates here on the, on the dice here, uh, 'cause whether we agree with each other or not, it takes a special kind of person to put themselves out there to run for city office and to be a public official. As I went through the city, going door to door, either signing, giving signatures or campaigning, I'm... ...to move forward, but I humbly ask for your support.